Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Come here. Come here, David.
Today we are featuring a Doberman, male, about a year and a half old. He's available, is he available now?
Saturday.
Saturday, and he's in cage nine. He's very, very calm, very nice-looking dog. Come down to our dog kennel and see if there's a dog that we have that would meet your needs, maybe small, maybe big, but he's a very nice dog. So, we're still betting a thousand. Come on, pick up the dog.
I think he wants to stay here. John.
Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lorraine County Commissioners' meeting. Today is April 20th. Our thought for the day, "It's been proven folks who have no voices or vices have very few virtues."
Read it again.
It's been proven folks who have no vices have very few virtues. Say that five times fast.
Good. Thank you, Lori.
9:30, which we're running a little late today, we have a proclamation which I will read. "In the manner of recognizing national child abuse prevention and awareness for the month of April 2006 in Lorraine County, Ohio. Whereas Lorraine County prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens, providing a safe and enjoyable place to nurture children and raise families. And whereas Voices for Children holds an annual rally for kids at Westfield Shopping Mall, which is one of several awarenesses and education activities across the county in April to recognize National Abuse, National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. This will be the fourth annual rally to be held on April 22nd, 2006. And whereas more than 440 children in Lorraine County suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year. And whereas many Lorraine County organizations and agencies have come together to make the public aware of the great services available to children and families in our county. And whereas through a local effort, our government, schools, churches, and local organizations must work together to ensure that every child has a chance for a safe and positive future. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners that we hereby recognize National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness for the month of April 2006 in Lorraine County and encourage all citizens to join in its efforts to ensure every child has a chance for a safe and positive future, free from abuse and neglect. Signed by Lori Kokoski, Ted Kallo, and Betty Blair." Is anyone here that would like to accept this?
On behalf of the Voices for Children, we thank you, and we would like to give each one of the Commissioners one of our little logos. And this is Sister Mary Barigan, who is on our board, and she would like to make a statement. Please do. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners. We just, Barb and I-
Where's your dog?
Well, I was afraid somebody would want to adopt him, so I left him at home, you know? I took him to the groomer yesterday, and they threatened to kidnap him, so I'm a little leery. Barb and I represent the Voices for Children program. Both of us are board members and also guardian at Lightem, and we appreciate very much your support of the program and the efforts of really all of the agencies in the county that do support children and families. As mentioned, we do have our rally event coming up. It's actually this Saturday at the mall. My dog will be there, actually. But we also have a lot of entertainment. We have almost 40 organizations from Lorraine County that will be there with information, activities, and opportunities for people to find out more about them and also to get some information for their families. So, we thank you very much for your support of us. We will have the proclamation with us at the mall, and then it will be in the Voices for Children office. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sister. Thank you, Barb.
Okay, we have another proclamation for Government Week in the matter of proclaiming the week of April 23rd through 29th as National County Government Week in Lorraine County, Ohio. Whereas counties promote, preserve, and protect their county communities nationwide, and whereas regionalism has become a modern mantra invoked to engage economies and efficiencies of scale in pursuit of enhanced quality of life through cooperation across boundaries among and between cities, villages, suburbs, and townships. And whereas county government in Ohio and across America is a long-accepted, long-effective implementation phrase for regionalism. Ohio's 88 county communities provide stability and effective first response to our citizens, breathing life to the concept of regionalism. And whereas counties like Lorraine County provide essential services to make our communities, our regions stronger, safer, and more effective. From the Commissioners and the Administrator, through the judges, prosecutor, recorder, treasurer, coroner, engineer, and sheriff, and others not listed, day-to-day life goes on, rights are protected, and businesses get done by and through county government. And whereas in recognition of the leadership, innovation, diligence, and valuable service provided by our nation's counties, and calling upon all elected or appointed officials within the boundaries of Lorraine County and the state of Ohio to join with us. Now therefore be resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, we hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd through the 29th as National County Government Week in Lorraine County. Signed by Lori Kokoski, Ted Kallo, and Betty Blair. Larry Allen, do you want to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, guys. As has been stated that the 23rd through the 29th is Government Week, we're going to have, and we would ask the community to come out and be a part of our Local Regional Government Day here at the Administration Building, April 28th, 2006, from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m., whereby all the county offices are going to be open, and there are going to be many features for you. We'll have a welcoming address by the Commissioners, then a presentation by the county recorder. The Sheriff's Department is going to do identity theft prevention presentation, and the county prosecutor will be given a presentation. There will be tours of different offices, and also tours on the Lorraine County transit out to our 911 location, emergency management location, and to our county dog kennel. So, we're asking you to come next Friday from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. and see how your government is working.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, we're down to resolutions.
Okay. Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kate, excuse me, Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Okay. Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Okay, appropriation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner, Commissioners, I have a couple requests for hires from Job and Family Services, so we'll need a brief session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting.
Okay. Number 10, renew the 2006 Corsa and issue a warrant in the amount of $811,380 to Corsa for the years 2006 through 2007 benefit year.
So moved.
I'll second with the notation that this is an increase of $47,324 over last year.
I'd like Mr. Cordez to explain, you know, our budgets have been frozen for many years, and we, this is another instance where we do pick up some of the other departments' budgets, and he can explain that.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I sent you all a little note on that, and we've been periodically taking somewhat of a beating from a lot of the departments around the county because of restricting budgets and holding down increases in the budget, similar to health care and utilities and fleet gas and maintenance.
Workers' comp?
Well, the workers' comp, we haven't picked up yet this year, but we have every other year. This year was a little bit different. They were pushed into a position to absorb that within their budget. As Commissioner Kallo is fond of reminding me, I'm still on the hook for a couple million dollars in the red in our budget that I asked that you pass, and we're halfway there, but I'm starting to feel the water rising on the other half.
I'll get you a snorkel.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner.
I was thinking of like something to hook to his ankle.
Oh, wow. Wow.
I can feel the love.
Just teasing.
But, you know, our insurance went up this year, $50,000, due to two primary issues. One was the detention home, and the other was the county home because of the way they're reevaluating the liability with those facilities. Now, the county home, which is desperately struggling right now, and we've been over that, will pay theirs back through indirect cost over time. We'll pick up the remaining responsibility for detention home as a general fund department. Even if it's only half, that's an additional $25,000 that we have to pay out of the general fund. A lot of times, these general fund departments don't see these increases. They don't see the gas bills going up, the electric bills, the fleet maintenance vehicle bills, insurance bills. Our insurance, I believe that bill was, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars? And we're absorbing all of those increased costs. Last year, we absorbed $625,000 for health care for the general fund. The Commissioners picked up that tab for all general fund departments. And then they turn it around, and they kind of give you guys a bad time because you don't get them increases. Well, if you extrapolate all of these costs over their departments, you'll see that all these departments' costs are rising on average, you know, percent and a half to 3% depending on the size and how much square footage they occupy. So while we're holding down the actual dollar of what we give them in salary budgets and equipment budgets, we're definitely passing increases on to them in the form of picking up their bills. That if we did full cost or full absorption accounting, we would actually put that money into their department and then transfer it back. Everybody would get a certain amount of utilities money, and then we would transfer it back. And if they didn't have enough to make up their share, they would have to find it someplace else in their budget. We don't do the full cost, full absorption accounting here mainly because years ago, there wasn't really the sophistication in the systems here to do that. But if you ever went to that model, you would see just how much money the Commissioners have picked up over the last few years for these general fund departments. And I don't know that they really understand it, and they do, they don't want to understand it, and they definitely don't appreciate it. So this is just another one of those, and I don't want to speak too long, but thank you for that opportunity because it's an important issue as we struggle through the rest of this year.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Number 11, authorize various locations for Lorraine County public employee discounts. Cedar Point, tickets will be $31.50 versus $39.95 for adults and $9.95 for juniors and seniors, 62 and older. Children 2 and under are free. These tickets will be also available for the Hallow weekends. Soak City, tickets $230 versus $28. Geoga Lake, tickets will be $20 versus $24.95 for adult and $9.95 for juniors and seniors, 62 and older. Children 2 and under are free. Cleveland Metro Park Zoo Rainforest, tickets will be $8 versus $9 for ages 12 years and older, and $3 versus $4 for ages 2 through 11 years. Employees can purchase tickets in the purchasing department by money order, certified check. No cash will be taken, and also family and friends of the Lorraine County Community Alliance and all county agencies' board members.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Okay. Number 12, award contract to Safe Air Contractors Incorporated and Mentor in the amount of $30,549.47 for the removal remediation of asbestos for the Lorraine County Transportation Center. 80% will be paid by ODOT, and 20% will be paid from a construction account. Issue notice to proceed letter honor before March 24th and complete honor before May 15th. Authorize the county administrator to notify county auditor to release retainage at the completion of said project.
So moved.
I'll second with one question. Obviously, we can't start honor before March 24th. Does that extend the completion date?
Yeah, those dates should have been updated. We had some issues with this, so we'll modify them. I believe that we're not going to be done by May 15th. What I would like to do is just scratch the dates and put two to be determined in there.
Issue notice to proceed letter, completion to be determined?
Correct.
Is that okay with you as the mover, Lori?
That's fine.
And it's okay with me as the second?
This is a, this will get us going on the train station. I mean, this is-
Can't hear? Sorry. The motion was modified. Issue notice to proceed letter, completion date to be determined.
This has been a start again, stop again issue. We're trying to figure out how to use these funds, but this is going to be the first real work at the Transportation Center. So hopefully, we got all the hurdles done. Every time we thought we were there, something came up with the way we were using the funds. So I think we have it all under control now, and hopefully, we'll be moving very, very rapidly on our Transportation Center over the next year and a half.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. Any more discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Okay, number 13, retain JP Incorporated Amers to perform asbestos management oversight and air monitoring testing for Lorraine County in the amount not to exceed $6,500 to be paid from professional services account.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Yes, but where is this?
It's the management for the train station.
Well, I assumed that-
It's train station and record center.
And record center of both facilities.
We were down in some of the crawl spaces, looking underneath the old stages and stuff, and we have some asbestos issues down there that need to be taken care of. So this will be like an oversight, so we don't run into any hurdles later on.
Make sure the testing's done in the air quality and-
Commissioner Kallo has a lot of experience with this.
Was he down there crawling with you?
I think he's past his crawling days.
He passed my crawling days.
He just sends me in and says, is it okay to look in there?
Breathe heavy, Jim.
Those two projects, correct? Train station and the record center?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Under Job and Family Services, number 14, approve and enter into purchase of service agreements with various vendors for summer camp experiences for low-income Lorraine County children using the TANF funds. Authorize Director of Lorraine County Job and Family Services to execute on behalf of the Board. Number one is Common Ground in Overland, Ohio for 180 camp placements at Earth Camp in the amount of $28,800 effective June 19 of 2006 through July 28 of 2006 for six weeks. Number two, Horizon Activity Center in North Olmsted, Ohio for 390 camp placements at eight Lorraine County sites in the amount of $299,520 effective June 6 through July 21 of 2006. Number three, Little Lighthouse Learning Center in Lorraine, Ohio for 20 camp placements in the amount of $36,300 effective June 12 of 2006 through August 25 of 2006. And number four, Boys and Girls Clubs of Lorraine County in Overland, Ohio for 68 camp placements at four Lorraine County sites in the amount of $122,094 effective June 19 2006 through August 25 of 2006.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Jim, on this issue with the Job and Family Services, received a phone call from Jaclyn Morales at Linden School. They had the same concern that the Little Lighthouse had, where they had been awarded and then not given, or whatever degree that was. They've got 24 that they had applied for, and I spoke to Jaclyn Morales there yesterday, and wanted to follow up with you later today on this to see what's left, or, because I know there's a lot of funds in TANF that aren't being used statewide, a couple hundred million dollars laying around, so.
It's a, I received a similar call. I have not returned her call. I requested and do have on my desk the complete RFPs and packages that were submitted by each vendor to take a look at what her concerns were, and I've had dialogue with Ms. Golsky. The Little Lighthouse, we were able to resolve successfully, but the other proposer vendor, they weren't as, they lacked the ability to provide funding based upon their submission at this time. I know the state has a lot of money, but we don't. And I'm going to look over the paperwork to why the extra material will be sent over before I return the call, and I'd be happy to look over it with you after the meeting real quickly.
That's fine. Yeah, I just wanted to get back with her on that. We thought I spoke to her yesterday, and we had a good discussion, but-
I'm sure that they have a worthy program, and I'm sure that they want to provide those services, but once again, the amount of dollars available programmatically for each pot of what we can spend on is limited. But why don't we take a look at the RFP, and we can call from there. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Okay, number 15, approve and enter into a purchase of service renewal agreement with Diversified Transportation Services of Toledo, Ohio in amount not to exceed $202,000 to provide medical transportation for low-income Lorraine County residents effective July 1, 2006 through June 30 of 2007.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Betty? I do have a question. Number 15 and 16 are similar, but I think we need to just state why they're different. One is a renewal, and the other is for a different service.
All right. Diversified Transportation has been providing those services with Job and Family Services for a number of years, very successfully.
But if you read number 16, it's also for medical transportation services for low-income residents. I read them both. It's for a different service. Is there somebody here? I just think that-
Yeah, there always is somebody here from Job and Family Services.
Thank you. It just needs to be clarified. Thank you.
Doug Becker with Job and Family Services. Good morning.
Thank you, Doug.
Clarification, we have three contracts with, three separate providers for medical transportation. Item 15 is with Diversified. Item 16, we're requesting RFPs for the other two contracts. One is currently with LCT, and the other is with-
Life care.
Life care ambulance. Right. So that's the-
And I'm certain that LCT will continue to provide excellent service.
I'm sure it will.
We better hope so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Okay, number 16, instruct the clerk to advertise requests for proposals for medical transportation services for low-income Lorraine County residents. Notice will be published in the Morning Journal on April 24 and May 1, and to be opened at 2:00 p.m. on May 8 in the Commissioners' Fair Conference Room.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Number 17, instruct the clerk to advertise requests for proposals for computer programming and training project to the provision of access data programming services. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on April 24 and May 1, to be opened at 2:00 p.m. on May 9 in the Commissioners' Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste Management District, number 18, allocate $15,000 for a litter pickup program in cooperation with the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District and Lorraine County Engineer to be paid from plan implementation account. The funds will provide for seasonal workers of van and maintenance, safety equipment, and training.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Engineer, number 19, award contract to Kokosin Materials, Frederictown, Ohio in the amount of $256,527.50 for asphalt materials for Lorraine County Highway Department. Three bids were received on April 11 and will be paid 100% with MBGT from the Supplies and Materials Account.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Sanitary Engineer, number 20, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the Broadway Avenue-Taylor Streets Sanitary Sewer Project, number 114 in Amherst Township. The notice to be published in the Morning Journal on May 15 and 22 of 2006. A pre-bid meeting on May 26 will be held, and bids to be opened at 2:00 p.m. on June 14 in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokoski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator?
Commissioner, Rob Johnson is here from Johnston Aviation, and he has some good news about the airport, and I've asked that he come and tell you that in person.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. For those of you here that don't know who I am, I'm Rob Johnston, and I'm the President of Johnston Aviation and also the business development person assigned by the Airport Authority to work on business projects for the development of Lorraine County Airport and our facilities. I just would take a couple minutes here to kind of bring you up to date on what's been going on. As most of you know, Johnston Aviation was assigned with the task of managing the airport facilities by the Airport Authority, and we began our operations actually April 1st. I'm happy to report that everything's running smoothly. We're converting from snow plowing to grass cutting and flower planting, and we're also in the process of working through several new mandates that have come down through the FAA and the TSA regarding airport and infrastructure safety for the county and for the region. Our representative to the state government- Our representative to the state government and also to the FAA, Doug McConnell, who's my partner in Johnston Aviation, Doug attended the State Airport Board Meeting this past week, and again, I'm happy to report that the airport is up to snuff. We're doing the things that we need to do, and we will continue to monitor the progress of our FAA safety program and our TSA initiative, and we'll keep you informed on the progress there. I'm also happy to report that we're launching an advertising initiative in the next couple weeks to advertise our flight school and our flight services that are available through our Service Center for Cessna Aircraft and Cessna Flight Training. This is also a college-level program and protocol that is attracting family-type investment in children that are going to become pilots of the future. This is not just going to be what has typically been in regional airports, your kind of weekend flyers and your country-club businessmen flyers. This is really a community involvement that has been long coming for Lorraine County, and our company has been doing everything in its power to attract new talent to the area and to the airport. We also are affiliated with two national colleges that actually offer a complete aviation degree, which includes your ratings all the way through a commercial airline pilot. So I'm very excited about that. You'll be seeing some of the advertising on the local cable networks. There'll be also some print media that will be coming out shortly, and I will again keep you posted on the progress there. And I might just digress for a second. This is kind of a new forum for us to be able to come to the Board and sort of report to you what we're doing, and I really do appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak with you and answer any questions you might have as I go through this short list, and I'm almost done. But this is something I would like to do routinely, you know, and if time permits and you will permit me to do so, I'd like to sort of come maybe monthly and just give you a little update on what we're doing, what things are happening out there, of course in coordination with the Airport Authority, which is basically our boss. Ultimately, though, you are, and I do understand that. I'm also happy to report that we completed, just about down to the final few words that need to be clarified, a project for a lease arrangement with the Board, the Airport Board, to begin our hangar expansion project, which is going to result in, hopefully by the end of 2007, at the very latest, a hangar project that will include 12 new T-hangers to be sold as condominiums to investors and/or businesses. That will allow us to expand our operations in the FBO, which is currently sort of crowded with small airplanes, and we're beginning to mix in some jet aircraft that we need to have a little bit more room for to service properly. So I'm very excited to tell you that we actually have about eight candidates right now that are telling us they are going to build a product with us. So I'll keep you posted on that also. We are working with Rebecca Jones in the Community Development Department on providing some assistance to get the infrastructure and also some job credits, because these hangars will bring more airplanes and more people to the airport that are going to contribute to the community's economy, the county's economy, rather. Last but not least, though, my effort in the last six months has been really to try to get Lorraine County Airport converted from basically a country-flying airport to a more commercial operation, which is involved in more than just weekend flying. I'm happy to report that our company has secured two major contracts with jet operators that will result in the addition of personnel and jobs, up to probably about 25 over the next two years, that are going to be involved in working on aircraft and also flying them. We secured a contract with the Dolan Group from San Antonio, Texas, and West Hampton, New Jersey, and the reason they selected our airport is because we're about in the middle, and we're going to crew and maintain their aircraft here at Lorraine, and we'll be going around the country, moving their people around, and also building a charter business using their aircraft. Also, and this is very exciting news for the county, we secured a contract with the Spitzer Group of Lorraine County here this past couple days. We just signed the contract Tuesday, and I'm very happy to report that we are going to be managing the Spitzer Group Lear 45, providing pilots and transportation support for their group and their corporation, and we'll also be developing charter business that will originate right here at Lorraine County for the region, and that will include Cleveland Companies, Toledo Companies, Akron, you name it. If you want to go somewhere, we can take you there. So with that, I will conclude, and thank you for your time today. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
That was absolutely wonderful. That's more information in 10 minutes than I've received in the last 15 months, Mr. Johnston. I'd like to know what they're doing. It's nice to see the Spitzer Group was on. I was speaking with Tony Giardini a couple weeks ago and told me you guys were in negotiations for that.
Yes, sir.
Is the Dolan Group any part of the Cleveland Indians Ball Team by any chance?
No, it's not. No, it's not. This is a cement, their primary business is actually a patented process for cement wall construction that is used. They call them lifted walls. I don't know if you're familiar with that term, but they actually manufacture walls in a patented process, and they lift them up and then build a building out of them. Fascinating group of people, and I'm actually looking forward to bringing their president, Mike Dolan, here to meet us in group. We have some ideas that might trickle over into other things that the county's trying to do at the airport. They might be able to assist us, because they're very serious about investment in regional airports and in regional commerce. They're already involved to some degree in doing that in the Texas and New Jersey areas, as well as the rest of the country.
I think they put the walls up for that company that went over by the old hills in Amherst.
Cloverdale?
I think they did the walls for Cloverdale. Those made, they come fully concrete-assembled, and they lift them into place.
Like Lego blocks.
Pretty much, big Lego block.
Big ones.
Commissioners, you can see that we've made a bit of a seamless transition to the professional management company that's been brought in to work at the airport. We're still working out some bumps and grinds and how things are going to be done, but we didn't come to a total collapse. Place didn't shut down, the lights didn't go off, and things are going well. You're going to be receiving more and more information about what goes on at the airport, and I appreciate your comment, Commissioner Kaylo. I think that we've always been behind the scene, behind on getting the news and what's going on at the airport, and getting the events and things that are shaping out there, and we want to make sure that that doesn't occur anymore as we continue to progress out there. There's a number of things that the people out there are working on. There's a number of things that we're going to be bringing to the Board, and we can do simple things to support the airport, like our transit company that we contract with. They have to rent space for where they store the buses and where they do maintenance on the buses. There's no reason why we can't have a spec building built out there and then rent it to that company, because they do have to leave space for all that as part of our RFP. There's ways for us to support us, okay? If we just, you know, think very deeply about what we're doing, because in that RFP for transit, we can simply put that we'll provide the facility, here's the rent for the facility, and they got to incorporate that into.
Their bid.
Their bid and their planning document, and there's no reason why we couldn't have transit, and I don't mean their administrative headquarters, because we're going to have the transportation center, but of course their maintenance and advertising and those spaces. There's no reason why we can't work on that industrial block out there at the airport to be, put a spec building out there and be our first building. There's a lot of ideas out there, and what we got to do is explore the possibilities.
Well, I think just the openness and people seeing what's happening out there, Rob, you coming here and telling people, you can see on TV what we're actually doing and what's getting done out there through the Airport Authority. People know what's going on, because I think an airport has just been for so long in and the end of itself. Now people can see what's happening and going on out there, and, you know, as long as you're working well with the city of Oberlin, as you talk about the commercial expansion and such like that, and I'm sure Shirley could talk about that, so.
Well, let me be specific about, I don't mean that Continental Airlines is going to start flying when they're not here.
Wouldn't be a bad idea, though.
Yeah.
I also think it's a good idea that you are working with our Community Development Department. I think that's an excellent idea.
They've been very helpful, and we have found some very intriguing potential for further business development. I mean, I could go on, and I know you have to get on with your business, but we are beginning to get attention as an airport operation from business development and from people that want to do aviation business-related items, such as electronics. There's a huge movement right now going on in the conversion of all the old aircraft and all the old aircraft systems to the new computer-based flight management systems, is what we call them. That's a technical term. Basically, it's a computer in the cockpit. It's only this big instead of what you see on your desk, and it literally tells you everything that's going on with the airplane. We have, and I won't get too deep into that, but we also have the support companies that go around, as I mentioned, the Cessna Service Center, the engine manufacturers. Jet support is a big item, because those people are looking for regional bases. So we are actually talking to some companies that are interested in putting facilities here at Lorraine. It sort of feeds on itself once it gets going. It's really a good thing for the future for the county, and we already have a lot of the skills available from companies that have been here for a long time, just in the people that are already trained to do a lot of these things. So I'm very excited about it.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
I was just speaking to someone yesterday to take off on the flight school, that not only people wanting to be pilots, but also somebody that wants to be an air traffic controller
Yes.
would have to get their pilot's license in order to become.
That is correct.
So are you getting a lot of that at the school also?
Yes, we are. We've had actually a rush on that, because as everyone knows, the controller shortage still continues to be a problem nationally, and we are right in the middle of that. Thank you for bringing that up. I tried to think of as many things as I could, and I know my three minutes is way up, but those are the kind of things we're looking for. Those are the kind of opportunities.
You're not locked in by three minutes. You're under my business.
Well, I look forward to coming and speaking with you more, and of course, anytime you have questions, I believe you all know how to get ahold of me, and anyone in the room that has any questions, I'll be around for a little while, yeah.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I will be bringing forward within the next week or two a proposal to do some financing. Hangar project is moving real well out there. It's a real nice project. I have some photos and information I'll pass to the Board at that time, and once again, this is not going to be a handout of cash, it's going to be a hand up, because it'll be a loan that'll be repaid to the county, so.
Are we going to utilize the Port Authority on that, or?
Most likely. Given the size of the funding involved, it's not practical for a Port Authority.
No.
You know, it's just going to sound strange, but anything under a million dollars is very, very difficult to do financing for.
For the cost.
For because of the cost of issuance out of the Port Authority. More than likely, we'll have to figure a way of doing that with the general fund. But again, this is money that'll come back to us. It's not a giveaway. But I'll be presenting you with that information, and then we can talk more in this forum here about whether you want to move that way or how we can move differently.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Shirley?
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. This was very interesting to hear this report, and I hope we'll continue to have them, as he's indicated. We do, with this increase in charter, jet service, and other businesses out there, we do need to be concerned or be informed on a regular basis of any increase in noise and changes in flight patterns in that area, because you know that there have been questions raised, not just in Oberlin, but for those that live around the airport.
David Ashenhurst, also of Oberlin, and I echo everybody's comments. This was a very informative briefing, and I would just say, at the city of Oberlin, since we have economic development activity that both ties in with the county's overall economic development planning, but as home to the Joint Vocational School, home to some light industrial areas that are actually changing and, or potentially changing, given the closure of the Ford plant and stuff, there's questions about what some of those facilities will be used for over time, and I hope that this information not only is presented at meetings like this, but to the extent that there are briefings and written materials that can be easily shared with other city officials in Oberlin, as well as by encouraging them to watch the Commissioner's Meeting on our cable. I hope that continues to come, and I would also say, and I don't normally speak for the city of Oberlin in these things, but I would say that a meeting, a briefing of City Council in Oberlin can certainly be arranged as well as an adjacent jurisdiction to the township where the airport is, and having both interests in flight plan changes and traffic changes, but also in the economic development activities as a place that, close by, has some other economic development activities, which I'm sure would like to be coordinated. And all of that is under the rubric also of encouraging regional governance, as well as acknowledging regional government next week.
Oberlin really doesn't have any idea of monopolizing these kinds of questions or comments and so on, so I am embarrassed to say that I am Elizabeth Rommings, also from Oberlin, Ohio. When Mr. Barth was first hired and when the airport was talking about expansion and so on, a lot of people at Oberlin were very concerned, and I frankly was rather negative, to put it mildly, on the whole aspect at that particular time. I would just like to say today, however, that much of what Mr. Johnston is able to describe, and which does indeed sound very positive and interesting, had been discussed, developed, considered, and so forth while Mr. Barth was still there. Apparently, their working relationships were excellent. The back-and-forthing of professional knowledge, ideas, and so on seems to have been excellent, and therefore, I think that, however the situation now is, Mr. Barth deserves a certain amount of credit for this also.
That's an enlightening comment, but I don't think Mr. Barth had anything to do with it. Because I hate to be contrary to your position, but I think Johnston Aviation did it, and I don't think Mr. Barth was part of that process. Rob, if you want to, what's your position on that? Well, I'm going to put him on the spot. You made the statement, Elizabeth. I didn't. Well, I'm going to clarify the issue now. I understand this was your undertaking through Johnston Aviation.
That is correct.
Okay.
Just one other, just to clarify, that is correct. One other comment that I would make, though, about the concern of, again, commercial operations. That's a very broad category. What that means in aviation is that we're actually paying people to fly us around. Recreational flying, which is primarily what's been going on at Lorraine the last 15 years, is where you just buy an airplane and you go out there and fly it yourself, or you fly your family or your friends. You don't charge them. In fact, you're not allowed to charge them. It's illegal, according to the FAA regulations. The types of aircraft that we're talking about using more of at Lorraine are the types of aircraft that are being used there now. Many of you may know, or if you don't, let me enlighten you, that we have a couple of foundation customers here that are, that have businesses right here in Oberlin, in Vermillion, Birmingham Township, people like Betcher Industries. Very fine company. Mr. Betcher and his group have supported the airport, and they've used the airport as a business tool to develop the industry that they're in, and I'm talking about nationally. That aircraft that they use is a Lear 31. The 45 and the 60 are very similar. They're slightly larger. They have some range capabilities that the others don't. They make about the same amount of noise that a jet makes. We're not talking about changing the traffic pattern. We're not talking about doing anything different than is already approved by both the county, the cities, and the FAA. So let me make that very clear. This expansion is not, we're just going to throw the doors open and anybody can do anything they want. This is an environment that is extremely sensitive, and we are very sensitive to your concerns. So I welcome them, and I will respond to any of them.
Thank you again, Rob, for clarifying. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, additionally, Mr. Twining has some news that he would like to share with you this morning also.
Good morning. My name is Ron Twining, and I probably have less than three minutes, but we just received a notice this morning from the Department, or Federal Department of Commerce, that Beckett in North Ridgeville has been awarded and established as a foreign trade zone. We've been working on that. We've been working on that. The application for the designation had been granted, but they've held the appropriate public hearings and everything, and they have officially signed off. I've given that to the commissioners, the clerk, and the media here today, the notification that Beckett is now established as a foreign trade zone.
Thank you, Ron. Nice work.
We continue to make progress on a lot of fronts, Commissioners. That'll conclude any reports I have this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flanagan.
Mr. Ennis?
I don't have anything to report, other than next week, I have a pretrial on one of the cases that we have pending, and it's at the same time as the commissioners' meeting. So, if you have any issues that you need to have answered before that meeting, give me a heads up before then.
Okay. Do you mean you're not going to be here?
Well, for at least part of the meeting.
Okay.
Commissioners, report?
I do have a couple of things. Well, Monday was Tax Day. Those of us living in Lorraine and working in Alariah, we had to pay a little additional money. So, just to let everyone know, there is a form that you can fill out through our payroll department. It's Lorraine County City Tax Authorization Form, so that they will take the correct amount out of your paycheck, so you won't end up paying more at the end of the year. The second thing, on Tuesday, I went and visited and toured the Vocational Guidance Center. It's a nonprofit organization that provides evaluation, vocational training, work experience, and job placement services for people with disabilities and economic disadvantages. It was a really eye-opening tour. They do a lot of good things there. They have about 25, between 25 and 35 employees at any given time, and they subcontract to different employers throughout our area. So, it was a very nice tour. And then, yesterday, I had the opportunity to take a tour and have lunch at the Lorraine Senior Center, and they pretty much rely on Bingo to fund their operating expenses. They have 11 staff members that work 25 hours a week. They're desperately looking for money, and they're also looking for some transportation because they do go to the seniors' homes to pick them up and take them to doctor's appointments, hospital, beauty shop, grocery store, those types of things. So, if there's anybody out there in the community that has a van that they want to get rid of, or if they have any cash that they'd like to donate to the Lorraine Senior Center, they definitely appreciate it. They have a lot of great things: woodworking, computer training, dancing, exercise, all kinds of things out there. And the cost for membership is, was $5, and they increased it to $7. So, they get a lot of nice services for their members, and at this time, they have about 420, with 80 of them being active. So, keep them in mind. Thank you.
They do a very nice job out at the Senior Center in Lorraine. Not too much happening this week, but can you tell us what happened at the train station yesterday, Mr. Cordas?
It was a regular episode from COPS yesterday. My understanding is that we found, well, a lot of people may not be aware, that somebody tried to burn our building down about a week ago, and they were, you know, we were joking that we wished they were successful, but...
You're saying it's just a basement?
Did you pay them to set that fire?
No, Commissioner, I didn't, but I should have thought about it. We had a break-in about two weeks ago, and it was, because the building's still in a demolition condition, it really wasn't a big deal. But there was a lot of vandalism within the building, a lot of graffiti, and there was definitely some attempts at possibly some arson, or even worse, within the building. We did the investigation, made the reports, and we just did what we had to do from there. But yesterday, some of our maintenance guys were going past the building, and they observed some disturbing activity, and they called for some law enforcement. My understanding is they found several juveniles actively engaging destruction within the building. In fact, there was some guns drawn, and some difficult detainees were taken into custody by the Alariah PD. So, I don't know where it's going from there. I'm not sure if this is the same group that was in the building last week, but it probably is. It's probably the same group of people that have nothing better to do. But because they're juveniles, we really can't go much further with that. But they were definitely mid-teens, most of them. There was one that was 12, though, that was there. So, we're going to have to do something once we start the renovation of the building to provide for additional fortification on some of the access points to that building. Thankfully, we were not too involved where there's been any destruction that lost the taxpayers any money. In fact, some of the areas, they...
Helped us out on...
Yeah, they kind of helped us out on the demo. So, it really wasn't a total loss.
It's a shame, though.
But the potential of arson and things like that, all joking aside, was rather spooky for us, especially now when we start the renovations. It's going to be a very difficult renovation because this is historical renovation, and any damage, once we start doing the work, will be, you know, very, very costly. But yeah, it was, I guess they had quite an excitement yesterday.
Well, the Alariah Police Department, our Sheriff's Department, thank you very much for getting that taken care of yesterday. No more report.
What is the protocol for our buildings that are inside the corporate limits of Alariah? I think the Sheriff's Department is called first.
We did call the Sheriff's Department, and...
And Alariah responded first.
Right. They had some activity they were involved with, and they allowed us to go with Alariah, and Alariah responded shortly thereafter.
The reason I ask that is because I had the pleasure of visiting with Lorraine County Sheriff deputies last evening, and that was one of the issues that we discussed, and the fact that those are road deputies that respond inside the corporate limits of the city of Alariah. So, we need to be looking at how many road deputies there are and what they do for us besides patrol the township areas. Just put my plug in for that. Is it my turn?
They have an important job.
Yes, it is.
Yes, they do.
It's your turn.
Thank you. A little fun first, and then a serious item. While you were having lunch at Lorraine Senior Center, I, we were down in Wellington at the Red Hat Luncheon at the First Congregational Church. And it was very interesting because everybody there had a red hat on, but the program was put on by Janet Byrd from the Lorraine County Historical Society, and she had hats from 1860 through the 1950s. And she had a couple of models of the ladies from the group. And the history about hats was very interesting, and it corresponded a lot with the history of our country. And I didn't know that there was so much dollars that went into hats. At one point, she said it was the second most expensive household item, second most expensive household item, was a hat, or hats. Aren't you glad we don't wear too many of them anymore? And then the other...
Some of us.
I was wondering how many of those hats you had in your closet at home, Commissioner.
At one time, I had about 40 of them. They don't have feathers anymore. But there was an issue several years ago about the importation of feathers on birds and stuff, and they passed a law constitutionally because of animal rights, because they were killing these birds to put them on hats and stuff. So, it was really very interesting. So, anyway, we had a little fun at lunchtime. It was very nice, and they're going to have another luncheon in October, so I hope they have as interesting a speaker. So, that was the fun part. The other part is, Rebecca is here from the Alliance, so she's going to tell us a little bit about our Lorraine County Transportation Day, which is coming up. And I saw David having a heart attack. You can't talk yet, Rebecca, until I'm done. You can stand there, but I want to get my plug in first. In conjunction of County Government Week, which talked about our affiliation with all the various political subdivisions, Laurie and I are going to be at the Community College on Friday, April 28th, for Lorraine County Transportation Day. And we're going to have several interesting speakers from the various departments. And one of the presentations, and I have a copy for each of the major newspapers, I'd like you to take this with you and look at a little bit. It's West Shore Greenway. It's a presentation from Neo-Trans Consultancy, which is Ken Prendergrast, who is very interested in rail. And it's not flight, but it's the other component. It's rail. And this is a proposal for the West Shore Greenway Regional Passenger Rail Service. We've talked about commuter rail between Cleveland and Lorraine County ad nauseam. This is a proposal to, in fact, put it into practice. So, Ken is going to make an official presentation on the 28th about this. Also, the Ohio Rail Development Commission is going to be there, and we're just going to talk about what's available in Lorraine County.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, as Commissioner Blair mentioned, next Friday, April 28th, is the Lorraine County Annual Transportation Day. We'll have the Ohio Rail Development Commission there, the Ohio Department of Transportation, the Northeast Ohio Area-Wide Coordinating Agency, and Lorraine County Engineers Office. So, we'll have local, state, national planners all at one point. So, it's always very informative and well-intended, and we look forward to it. The second point I wanted to bring up is that our website is now up. We're at www.lccommunityalliance.com. We've got agendas and meeting announcements on the site. And lastly, just briefly, we're excited to announce that the 10th Anniversary Celebration Luncheon will be held here at the Administration Building on June 2nd, and more information will be forthcoming.
We hope we're coming. You've got to be ready. If not, we're going to have picnic on the floor.
Just where are you eating at?
On the floor.
Well, in case it's not on the floor, where were you anticipating eating at?
In your new meeting room.
In your office, Jim.
Rebecca said your office.
Contrary to popular opinion and public publicity, it's not that big.
I checked with Ms. Davis, and she said that it will be ready. She works for you.
It's on her head.
I said if it's not ready, we'll just go out in the parking lot.
Well, I just, it'll be a fine launching to our new facilities. We'll make it happen for you, Commissioner Blair.
Yes, I thought it was a great idea. I knew you'd be happy about it.
You've got a better chance of making that budget balancing at this project by June 2nd.
Well, I'm a little concerned, but I understand you have some tools still from your days when you used to do that stuff. So, you're going to have to come in here in the evening and...
There you go. Evenings and weekends, we'll get it done.
I thought you weren't crawling on the floor anymore.
When you have to, you have to.
All right.
Sort of like when I'm begging for your vote.
That concludes my report, Madam Chair. Thank you, Rebecca.
Any additional public comment? Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Sherman, Lorraine County AFL-CIO, on behalf of President Brian Baker. Decades of struggle by workers and their unions have resulted in significant improvements in working conditions, but the toll of workplace injuries, illnesses, and deaths remain enormous. Each year, more than 56,000 workers die from job site injuries and illnesses, and another 6 million are injured. Companies that repeatedly break safety laws, killing workers, face only weak penalties. Workplace standards are out of date and inadequate. Many long-recognized hazards have not been addressed, and new workplace hazards that emerge get no attention. Ergonomic hazards still cripple and injure more workers than any other workplace hazard. Immigrant workers are being killed on the job in record numbers. Millions of workers have no protections under the Occupational Safe and Healthy Act. The first, the unions of the AFL-CIO and the United Auto Workers remember these workers on April 28th, Workers Memorial Day. The first Workers Memorial Day was observed in 1989. April 28th was chosen because it is the anniversary of the Occupational Safe and Health Act Administration, OSHA. And the day of remembrance is a similar day in Canada. Every year, people in hundreds of communities and work sites recognize workers who have been killed or injured on the job. Trade unionists around the world now mark April 28th as an international day of mourning. Workplace injury and illness and death do not discriminate between those that are represented by a union and those that aren't. We want to thank the Commissioners, number one. We understand there's some resolutions coming out next week in support of Workers Memorial Day as they have in the past. We also want to thank the Commissioners for giving us the time and space. For those that don't know, on the north side of the old courthouse is the Workers Memorial Day Sandstone Memorial, and a similar one sits out in front of Lorraine City Hall. There's going to be services next Friday, April 28th, at 12 noon at the memorial in front of the old courthouse, right here on the north side, and at 3:30 PM in Lorraine in front of Lorraine City Hall where the other memorial. And I've left some flyers at the back table. Again, thank the Commissioners for their support by resolution and for giving us the space and maintaining that monument. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Going to be a busy Friday.
Yeah, it's definitely going to be a very busy Friday.
Friday is great.
Commissioners, we have a long and warm tradition of partnering with local unions on that site over there, so I would encourage you, if you have a little bit of time, to participate. And we will make sure the site is prepared properly for when they have their ceremony as we do each year for them. And that goes back, I think Herb Jacoby was the one that actually proposed that location for the original memorial some time ago. Hard to believe that much time's gone by, Mike. I have some letters for you. If you'll stop by my office. Do you want to pick them up, Mike? Something I owe you?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'm here.
We want to move the reading of the Board Course Fund.
Oh, yeah. Gosh. Did you make that motion?
I'm trying to spit it out.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kalkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Now, my motion still stands. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kalkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
In 1992, the citizens of Colorado voted to change their state constitution by passing an amendment called the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, or TABR. It promised to cut government waste, make politicians accountable, and provide taxpayer refunds. If only the taxpayers of Colorado had been told about the fine print.
I regret voting for TABR.
Coloradans, I think, were not fully aware of what they were voting on when they voted for TABR.
You know, usually, when it looks too good to be true, it is too good to be true, and that's what's happened in Colorado.
It sounds awesome. I get to vote on any new taxes. Why wouldn't I support it? And what I found is that there's a whole lot more to TABR than that particular soundbite. And we all got suckered in.
You may be wondering why you should care about what's happened to Colorado's schools, universities, healthcare, roads, and economy. After all, you don't live there. But Colorado is a case study of the harmful effects of TABR, the so-called Taxpayer Bill of Rights. And with some politicians trying to bring it to your state, you should know what it's actually done to Colorado taxpayers in their state.
Coloradans were told in 1992 when TABR passed that what this guaranteed them was a right to vote on any and all tax increases. What the public didn't realize is that it would contain the strictest tax and spending limitation of any state in the country, and long-term would hobble us economically.
The problem with TABR is that the formula was flawed. It was deeply flawed.
TABR's fine print reveals a rigid formula of inflation plus population growth that determines how much the state government can increase its spending from one year to the next. And here's why this formula doesn't work. Inflation is determined using the Consumer Price Index, which is based on what a typical American buys. Think of it as a basket of goods that includes things like housing, cars, and food. But here's the problem. What consumers buy day-to-day is not the same as the basket of goods state government buys day-to-day. States must purchase things like education and healthcare, services that rise in price much faster than what the average person buys. So, restricting a state's budget based on the increase of the Consumer Price Index prevents states from keeping up with the rising cost of vital services, making drastic cuts inevitable. Making matters worse is the second part of the TABR formula, population growth. It's defined as the overall population change in a state from year to year. The problem here is that population growth doesn't factor in the subgroups of people with costly needs, like schoolchildren, the elderly, and the sick, groups that tend to grow more rapidly. For example, as the baby boom generation ages, the number of senior citizens in most states is rising faster than the general population, putting new burdens on state programs that help the elderly. So, limiting state spending using overall population growth ignores the needs of groups like the elderly.
As a Republican, I can tell you that TABR will tie your hands.
Brad Young served in the Colorado State Legislature for over a decade and was chairman of the Senate... of the state's Budget Committee. He's seen firsthand the devastating effects of TABR, and he's now writing a book, The Truth About TABR.
The formula of growth plus inflation doesn't keep up with the economy. What it does is it has an insidious effect where it shrinks government every year, year after year after year after year after year. It's never small enough.
The faulty formula is only one major problem with TABR. Another major problem is that because it gets locked into a state's constitution, it is very rigid, leaving no flexibility for a state to respond to unexpected challenges.
Once you've established a constitutional amendment, it's almost, it's just almost impossible to change it.
In fact, since TABR was added to the state constitution, Colorado has become one of the nation's poorest-funded and poorest-performing states. Colorado has fallen to 47th in K-12 education funding. The ratio of teacher salaries to average private sector earnings is the lowest in the nation. Child immunization rates are one of the lowest in the nation, and pension and reserve funds have been raided just to keep basic public services functioning. And then there are the promised taxpayer refunds that, in years when Coloradans actually get them, aren't really worth much.
TABR promises refunds to people, promises people that they'll get money in their pocket. And the reality in Colorado is that while you get a little bit of a check in some years, you end up paying so much more for schools, for roads, for tuition, and for healthcare. But there's no, it's an empty promise. There's no real new money for anybody. In fact, it's costing us more.
Parents are paying for essential services that previously came out of school budgets. We pay for workbooks. We pay for paraprofessionals. We pay for reading, paraprofessionals, art classes, music classes.
You guys can either come or you can stay.
When we got refunds, and we haven't gotten them for a few years, was around $200, $250 for a married couple filing jointly. So shelling out $1,000 for schools per year is obviously, you know, I'm losing money.
One year, we got $132 back. But when I'm having to pay $1,000 for my kids to do sports because of what isn't available any longer, it's not worth it.
Kristi Hargrove is a Republican and a small business owner.
TABR has made it impossible to keep up with the cost of education. We, our schools are suffering terribly.
Her family lives in a small town some 500 miles from Denver. Her three kids attend the local high school, where TABR has literally had a chilling effect.
The kids were freezing in school. It was ridiculous, wearing down coats to school. And, you know, in some of the schools, they're wearing gloves, taking notes, wearing gloves. And actually, that's what got me involved. So I think we're going to have to really think about some more fundraisers this year.
Kristi says they've had to rely on the PTA, private donations, and a mill levy to keep their schools running, not to mention the heat.
We have local fundraisers and property tax initiatives and things to pay locally for what the state used to pay for, because there's no money. Our PTA here is buying all the textbooks for the school. We still have to pay back the $30,000 loan from our district fund drive from a year ago, June.
And in schools where parents can't afford the extra fees, education is being cut back even more.
It's the constant humiliation of parents who perhaps can't afford to pay for the basic things. It's not luxuries we're talking about. Our students are pitted one against the other for a piece of an ever-shrinking pie, and that's just not right.
In considering a TABR amendment, does a few hundred dollars in refunds per year, is that going to offset dramatic increases in tuition? It won't work that way.
Jay Hellman is the president of Colorado's Western State College. He's seen firsthand how TABR has placed public higher education lower and lower on the priority list for funding.
We've got a real backlog of controlled and deferred maintenance issues with our buildings. At our college, a small college, we are, we're about 13 million behind in our ability to care for our facilities.
Most important thing that governments can do to aid an economy are to invest in people, education, and workforce, and infrastructure.
Tom Clark is the executive director of the Denver Metro Chamber, the largest business organization in the state.
The biggest and most obvious infrastructure that's suffered have been roads and higher education. We're running, depending upon who you talk to, a $40 billion to $60 billion deficit in road work that needs to be found somewhere, and TABR's made it impossible for us to get that money back into projects.
I think it definitely has an impact on safety in the community.
300,000 was actually paid by the community.
Art Morales is the fire chief for Castle Rock, Colorado, population 35,000. He's had to freeze jobs at his fire station due to TABR budget restrictions, putting his existing firefighter's safety at risk, as well as the safety of the growing community.
We're providing more and more services just without extra people.
There's really not an end in sight, leaving TABR intact.
TABR is marketed as a way to cut government waste, but in reality, it has ended up costing taxpayers more through increased fees for everything from fishing licenses and court filing fees to contractor fees that get passed on to new homeowners. Rancher John Singletary says the water regulatory agency in Colorado has gotten so broke that they've turned into a primarily fee-funded agency.
When they come and inspect our wells or do any services that regulate our water process here, they charge enormous fees, maybe up 300, 400% over what they were prior to this TABR.
And Singletary says TABR's created a funding drought for Colorado's ag department.
The Colorado Department of Agriculture has no money to help the farmer in research and infested areas. We have different diseases that sometimes hit our livestock that we need assistance on, and, boy, it's really difficult. It's difficult to find that money.
Has she ever had pneumonia before?
She's had one ear infection.
We had no idea what the true impact of TABR would be when it was passed.
She stayed 20 days.
Dr. Stephen Berman is the professor of Pediatrics at the University of Colorado School of Medicine.
Colorado has the most restrictive child health programs in the country.
TABR has forced the state of Colorado to opt out of certain Medicaid programs, and the result is devastating to families like Kim Abudes, who has healthcare insurance but needs Medicaid because her daughter is severely disabled.
I have been given basically three options, and those options were to institutionalize my daughter, or to move to another state that we wouldn't have a waiting list, or to come up with the money, the funds on our own, to pay for her supplies.
Kim moved her family to Colorado last year in order to keep her job, and she never dreamed her daughter would be placed on a five-year waiting list for Medicaid.
It's devastating for my daughter because her health is at stake. I would have thought twice, I would not have, we would not have moved if we would have known that we would have lost our Medicaid services. We would never have moved.
Since TABR, 3/4 of Colorado pediatricians won't treat Medicaid patients because reimbursement rates are so low. More poor children lack health insurance in Colorado than in any other state in the nation, and access to prenatal care has fallen dramatically. Dr. Mark Johnson works at a public health clinic in Jefferson County.
We have had to cut programs in our substance abuse area. We've had to cut programs in our home healthcare. We have had to cut our prenatal program, and we have cut our primary care treatment programs. TABR has definitely had an impact here.
And on November 1st, 2005, after 12 years of TABR, Colorado voters said enough. They approved a measure to put TABR on hold for the next five years to avoid further deterioration of state services. So learn from the experiences of Coloradans. If someone is trying to convince you to vote to put TABR into your state's constitution, think about it. Think about what this rigid, unrealistic formula of inflation plus population growth could do to your state, and ask yourself, is it worth it?
You have to be careful if someone's putting money in your pocket while your bridges are falling down.
The things that you care about in your state will disappear. They will start crumbling, your schools, your roads, start closing your parks and your higher ed, and have lousy highways. That's what you get with TABR.
It hits you everywhere, and it is a problem, and it's very apparent every day. It's not just something that's out there. It's in your life. It's in your face.
TABR threatens to be a long-term embarrassment to Colorado.
My recommendation to other states is, learn from the Colorado experience. Don't go down the road we traveled.